All right, I'd like to call the September 19th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. In front of you, you should have the minutes from the September 6th and the September 8th workshop. Could I first get a motion to approve the September 6th regular meeting minutes? After if you had a chance to take a look. Hazel? Could I have a second? Sangita? All those in favor? Any opposed? No, that's unanimous with all here. And then the September 8th workshop meeting minutes. When you've had a second, could I have a motion to approve those? Tom? Second. Sherry? All those in favor? None opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting? Sangita? Second. Jen? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. And the first item on our agenda is the Grade 5 through 8 Guidance Report with Ms. Bianca and Dr. Bliss. And welcome to the district, Dr. Bliss. It's the first time-
I was just gonna say that.
Oh, sorry. I stole your thunder.
I'm so happy that you did. I wanted to begin by welcoming Dr. Susan Bliss, who is a wonderful new addition to our staff. She is our Student Support Coordinator. And so, last year, our previous Student Support Coordinator Nora Daly began work with our wonderful Guidance Counselors at Saks and the Saks Administration on examining some of their work and having some professional dialogue around their work. And Dr. Bliss picked up that ball, I would say, actually during the summer with me in conversation and has spent the last few weeks helping our Guidance Department prepare for this evening and, I think, coaching them and guiding them and helping to lead them with the Saks Administration. And so, I'm very excited to turn the evening over to her and to the Guidance Counselors and to the Saks Administration to share the exciting work that they do and to give you some deeper detail about that work. So, Dr. Bliss?
Thank you so much. On now. Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. So, thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. We're just so excited to be able to share with you the great work that the school counselors are doing. And before we start, I just want to first say how excited I am to be in this district. I'm just thrilled. This has been an amazing two weeks for me, just getting to walk around and talk to the students and the teachers and the administration and see the care and commitment that this district has for the kids. So, I'm just really thrilled about that. I'll just give you a bit of my background so you know who I am. Everyone keeps calling me the new Nora Daly, so I'm having a little identity crisis. I really am Susan Bliss, but you'll get to know that. And my role is obviously to, I think, sort of have a vision for school climate and to really keep in mind creating the most respectful, safe, and caring schools that we can have in New Canaan. And my background, I'm coming with, I started out as a school social worker, actually, and a Director of Counseling in a school. I spent 29 years in mental health in various roles and working as a supervisor of child and adolescent services. I fell in love with teaching. I became a teacher and the last seven years I've been, was teaching full-time at Fordham University, teaching clinical practice with children and adolescents and also teaching human behavior in undergrads, teaching child development. So, I felt like this was the perfect job for me. It kind of brings together so many of my strengths and I'm just so excited to be here. So, with that, I do want to just quickly introduce the counselors to you and tell you, let's see, first we have the lower school counselors. Samantha Bachman is our newest addition. We were so lucky to find her this summer and we just really enjoy having her with us. Deb Owen, who's going to be sadly retiring, I think you know, and we're going to miss her warmth and wisdom. Liz Reynolds and Christine Rizzoli is going to be presenting in a bit. And we have Sarah Beltran in our upper school, Brad Lepisto, who you'll be hearing from shortly, and Tammy Nettleton. And I just want to thank all of them for their support and as I've entered this new role and all the work that they've done on the presentation. So, I wanted to, before we get going, really talking about the school counselors and what they do, which they will do very competently, just set some context for why this work is important and why it's important to me. And one, of course, I'm a researcher, so I had to just throw in a little research. I hope you'll bear with me for a moment. And I think this is an important study because usually, I'm a little skeptical of studies. I sort of say, oh, one study, you know, that doesn't, what does that really mean? Two studies, eh. Five studies, I'm start to be interested. This is a meta-analysis of 213 studies where they really looked at social emotional skills and the impact on kids and learning. And what's really exciting is the fact that in these 213 studies that they looked at, they found that actually, social emotional learning increases academic performance by 11%. So, 11% doesn't sound to some people like a lot, but first of all, we have to remember it's social science research. And also, we have to remember 11% of like a 90 on a test turns into a 99, which my son, who's 16, would be really excited about and I think we'd all really appreciate. So, I think it's powerful research that we have to be paying attention to. We also found that the research reduced aggression and emotional distress. And I'll just say for a second that emotional distress is something I think we're all concerned about. I'm certainly concerned about the numbers of adolescents that is one in five right now. One in five adolescents is diagnosed with a mental disorder, which includes anxiety, depression, substance abuse, behavior disorders. Those are huge numbers. That's nationally. I don't know the numbers in New Canaan. You know, I'm sure we're better than that, but I think it's just alarming and we have to think about the stress that our kids are under. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And this, social emotional learning improves positive attitudes towards self and others and increases helping behavior. So, I just wanted to have us focus a little bit on, you know, why we think what our school counselors do is so important. I'm also a developmentalist and I just think middle school is such an important part of development for these kids. They're really going from the safe home of their elementary schools into this larger place and the school counselors do an amazing job of making it a place that they feel connected and that they have relationships and adults they can go to. So, with that, I just wanted to mention one other thing, which I also think the school counselors are preparing our kids for career. And I think that's part of their job and they'll talk to you about that in terms of school counseling. But as a professor of graduate students, I was often asked to give references and I would get a lot of calls and I was always interested that the calls that I received to recommend a student for their new job, the questions that they asked me, what kinds of questions do you think they asked? They didn't ask, "How competent are they in what I taught them?" They asked me, "How well do they work in teams? What, how can they deal with stress?" These are the things that they were really interested in. So, you know, they can teach them the rest. They can teach them evidence-based practice. They can't teach them, at that stage of the game, to work well in teams. So, I found this quote and I just thought I would read it to you as an example of what I think about when we're thinking about educating our kids and the importance of social emotional learning. And the quote is from Jack Welch, who you sure know is the retired chairman of GE. And the quote goes like this, "A leader's intelligence has to have strong emotional component. He has to have high levels of self-awareness, maturity, and self-control. She must be able to withstand the heat, handle setbacks, and when those lucky moments arise, enjoy success with equal parts joy and humility. No doubt, emotional intelligence is more rare than book smarts, but my experience says it is actually more important in the making of a leader. You just can't ignore it." So, with that, I just hope to be able to convey this evening the importance of what our school counselors are doing and what a dynamic group they are. And thank you so much for your attention. And I'm going to turn it over at this point to Brad Lepisto.
Hi, good evening. Consistent with the past slides, New Canaan has a long history of focusing on the quality of our experiences and interactions, for example, via District Goal 4, which our work directly supports. In addition, the current school-wide goal at Saks is to nurture responsive and respectful learning environments. Our work is guided by the District's Sample Framework, which is built on the skills of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship This slide provides a snapshot of the sample framework. It's hard to read on the slide, of course. There are two copies in your packet. There's a larger one behind the slides. The framework was built left to right, as it appears on this document, and the part that we utilize day-to-day are the student learning expectations in the last column on the right. These provide specific, common, target behaviors and skills that we help students to develop and demonstrate. Our work is also informed by the national and state professional organizations. This graphic illustrates the totality of our roles and focus areas. In particular, it outlines the three intersecting domains that our work supports, personal and social, career, and academics. And it also highlights the importance of continued collaboration with all stakeholders. We at Saks have articulated all of these focuses and foundations in our department's mission statement, which highlights that each student is important and unique, that we are focused on the students developing sample skills, and that our common end goal is the district's focus on helping our students become productive, ethical, and responsible global citizens. Next, we'll describe in a bit more detail the various components of our work, which include education, individual student planning, responsive services, and collaboration within and outside the school community. In terms of education, this lists some of the key topics we help teach. For example, students have the opportunity to problem-solve while interacting with their peers respectfully and responsibly via the experiential activities during the Project Adventure Unit in PE class, which we co-teach with the PE teachers. The importance of this work, particularly engaging in respectful and responsible ways, was just recently reconfirmed by Google. In their study of how to create effective professional teams, they found that the quality of team members' interactions and their attention to the social emotional needs of their teammates is actually the most important determinant of the team's success. So, in PE class, while the students are attempting to move from one island to the other, we observe and monitor interactions and then lead them in reflecting and analyzing these interactions Another component of our role is individual student planning, which entails assisting students in analyzing their progress and setting personal and academic goals. One way that we engage students in this is through our participation in the student support team process, which my colleague Christine will elaborate on in a moment. Another way that we provide individual student planning for all students is through the process of preparing our eighth-grade students to begin ninth grade here at NCHS. One of our big focuses in this work is to help students define and achieve a healthy mindset about high school, to help them be optimistic and excited rather than scared, to help them understand that it's a four-year journey rather than being hyper-focused on just ninth grade, and to help them find ways that they can be involved. One way that we do this is by partnering with the high school to have current high schoolers talk to the Saks eighth graders in their classrooms. Of course, no one knows the high school better than the students. We also partner with families by providing a website, large group informational meetings, as well as individual meetings with their eighth grader, their eighth grader school counselor for any parents who are interested. Next, I'd like to welcome my colleague Christine Rizzoli, who will discuss the next slides with you.
The overall purpose of our responsive services is to help students so they are able to return to the classroom more available for learning. We offer support to students through individual or group counseling for both short-term concerns such as a peer conflict, which we may help with mediation, or a new student adjusting to the school and helping them get connected. We also order, we also support students on longer-term concerns and difficulties such as grief and loss or changes in their families. School counselors are the center of the communication in the student's life at school and we work to ensure that all stakeholders involved are working together for the student's success. At Saks, each student is assigned to a team. This model makes a very large school seem smaller. Counselors are also assigned to teams and meet weekly with teachers on the teams to discuss student progress and concerns. We also act as a liaison between families and school. School counselors are also part of the school climate team. We work to empower students to hear their voice in improving respect throughout the Our student support team is model is based on national legislation, response to intervention, and state legislation, scientific research-based intervention, which is designed to ensure that all students are successful in the areas of literacy, numeracy, and behavior, and to provide support to any student not meeting success in those areas. Counselors play a large role in that process. We attend meetings weekly to discuss student progress. We communicate with parents with progress updates. We work with teachers and we meet with students to review grades and review specific teacher So, as it was mentioned earlier, the Counseling Department did, conducted a comprehensive and intensive self-study last year. We want to be reflective in our practice and to make continual improvements to our practice. This slide shows some information we gathered through that self-study and shows a range of services, the session, classroom, classroom lessons, the counseling sessions, and the meetings that we attended. The caseload does vary depending on the size of the class and the size of the team. So, this slide is also in your packet if you want to get a closer look at it, but it really is just a snapshot, a week in the life of a school counselor at Saks. And it really kind of shows what I love about my job because every day is different. And the range of services and responsibilities that we provide is wide and we have, from facilitating a meeting to having lunch, lunch group with fifth graders and then going on to co-teach a project adventure class in PE, it's very exciting. And now, I'm going to turn it over, back over to Dr. Bliss to finish up.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to finish with talking a little bit about future directions that we've been talking about in my big two weeks that I've been here. I have all kinds of ideas. But in seriousness, it's been great to have this opportunity to really talk with the counselors and get a sense of where they're going and the self-study that they did was really helpful in informing this. But certainly, we want to continue with the analyzing and utilizing the climate data that we have. I think it's really exciting what Saks has been doing with the climate work and Dr. Bill Preble as a consultant. I was able to go to one of those meetings this week and it was just amazing to see those kids working with Brad and coming up with how they're going to change their school. So, that's exciting. We're going to continue to, continue with those initiatives. We also want to look at universal instruction based on that sample framework that you were talking about and that's also in your packet. Many districts have a more systematized way of approaching this and we'd like to be able to begin to think about, how could it be systematized in some way, working with others and thinking through that. We'd also like to think about expanding individual success planning. We know goal-setting is important. It's been conversational. We'd like to kind of think about how we're going to be doing that also in a more systematic way. We know that looping has been something that many of you have talked about. We've been talking about it philosophically. We love the idea of having our counselors be able to continue with the same person for more than one year. It is a challenge. There are some downsides, losing some of the team approach that we talked about and logistically, it has just been very difficult up to this point to figure out how to make it all work. But we want to continue the conversation. We don't have an answer yet, but we're just continuing to try to get what's best for the kids. So, I'll be looking at that with the counselors. And then finally, to look at advisory, which is another thing that the counselors have been doing some amazing work in. We're just always working on continual improvement. We've done some different things with the advisory, used it for school climate work and we want to look and assess that, how's it going? And also, think about how to make it really high-impact for the kids. I really like high-impact, engaging kinds of lessons, so we don't want to just work on workbook or something, you know, we want it to be things that the kids are really getting something out of. So, we want to assess that. We want to look at how we're going to improve going forward. So, those are some of the areas that we'd like to continue in talking about together. And then, we thought that we'd like to just bring the voices of some students to you and really get their perspective because we're all about student agency and empowerment and let them tell you a little bit about what the school counselor means to them.
A counselor helps you through all the hardships that you have in middle school and not just that deep part of it, but also just talk with you, just like even if you're not having any problems, they invite your class to like have lunch and it's just like somebody who can, you feel like really comfortable with.
I think a counselor is somebody that can help you with everything. Like, as I said, like not just if you're having a problem, they'll invite you in even if you're not having any problem, just to like make you feel good about yourself.
I think a counselor is somebody who just goes around the school saying great things and helping with different activities. And I think a counselor is just somebody who's just willing to share their feelings with everybody.
Well, we make crafts for kindness too. We give them to people like who are in life rehab. If they're like coming back from a injury, or surgery.
During Project Adventure Gym, they help you work as a team.
Well, they help us with, well, when we're having problems and when their friends turn their backs on us or if we're having problems with the teacher or with our grades.
And they help us like if we're having, like if we have a lot of after-school activities, they help us with time management and how to do our homework.
They hold lunch groups so you can hang out with different friends and not the same friends.
They can help you with your feelings and problems.
Well, they kind of help you with all your problems. They can help you with your homework. They can help you with if anybody's, if anybody's being mean to you or if you're having a problem adjusting to school. So, they help you with a lot of things.
They also help you like if you have like family issues or things that you can't really have trouble talking to your parents or talking to other students about if they're like your second home, parents.
Counselors can help you with anything you're worried about if somebody said something mean that's really bothering you and can't stop thinking about it or something academically challenging or anything you just need help with, they can just really help you get through it.
Well, when I feel emotional and I feel like I have to get my feelings out, I can always go to the guidance counselor for information about what I should do.
They just help you with if you're having a problem with your friends or just what's going at home, you can go by yourself or just with friends and then you can talk it out with them and you can play really fun games like at lunch bunch or just like in the morning before school.
If somebody's being mean to you, you can report to your counselors about it.
So, that gives you a little picture of our students' perception of our counselors. So, you're going to help me? Oh, good. And present. So, with that, I'd just like to thank you so much for, again, inviting us and giving us this opportunity to talk to you about our counseling program and say that we really do believe school counselors work to ensure that all children reach their potential in school and in their lives and in their careers. So, thank you very much. Questions?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Watching that video was always probably the most impactful, not that you all did a wonderful job, but that was probably the most impactful piece to the presentation and, you know, it highlights the tall order that you all have. I keyed in on a student who said, "You help us with everything." I was like, wow, that's a, that's a big job. And I think there's a few of us on the board who can, you know, appreciate the quote you read and by Mr. Welch and talking about how important emotional intelligence is to the development of leadership. So, thank you for sharing that with everyone. I'd like to open it up to the full board for any questions or comments. Sherry?
First of all, that was a wonderful presentation and I appreciate the meta-analysis and I concur wholeheartedly on the importance of social emotional learning. And I think you have a tremendous staff at Saks, so you're very fortunate in that. I have one comment and then one question. My comment is on, I'm on the looping and I'm very encouraged that you're looking at the looping model. And as a parent of children at all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, I can observe the quality of the relationship that's developed at the high school in the looping model. And I think, I know it won't be an easy task to look at, you know, applying six counselors to four grades, but I'm encouraged that you're, you know, taking that on because I think the benefit of that model would be worth it. And I think in middle school, I think there are some students who don't have the opportunity to develop that relationship and therefore never open that door. And like I said, I think you have a tremendous staff and we want to make sure that that door is open for all students who may need it. Then my other, my comment question is, I love Brad, everything you guys have done to empower the students on the school climate and all of the counselors. And my question really is, I think the few students that are involved in that are so very fortunate and how do we continue to look for opportunities, you know, more opportunities? And is there anything the board can do to support you to create more opportunities for students in the, in the school climate initiatives?
Thank you. We certainly agree and it's something that we even talked about today at least three different times, no exaggeration. So, you guys are incredibly supportive and always have been. I don't think that's the issue. It just becomes somewhat logistical. So, today, we had about 25 kids together and we were showing them the list of the other 35 who are eager to be involved and we're just not sure how to get that many kids together in a space and be productive. But certainly, Dr. Preble has really emphasized and we wholeheartedly believe that it's got to be something that everyone feels a part of rather than just a committee.
I'm really new to this, as you know, but the other thought that we've been just beginning to think is, again, using advisory and whether the advisory where every kid could be a part, bringing some of the school climate work into that format as well to reach more kids. So, we'll keep talking and working on that.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Maria?
I know a lot of parents, I'm sure, appreciate the time management component, the real organizational skills, and I think that's really great. I did have a few questions a couple of years ago about the advisory and how those direct classroom lessons results are reported back to parents. Like, in what ways are parents engaged on the advisory lessons? Are they given feedback as far as progress for students?
That is a good question that I do not know the answer to, to be honest. Does anybody have an idea about that? Yeah, so I think that's it.
Julie? Julie?
I have a feeling that my voice is probably loud enough to reach. But we actually, that's under study right now, as a matter of fact. And I guess the best way to put it is that in eighth grade, we've put a pause on it and we've really used it instead of having the direct lessons as a time to actually generalize out our school climate work. As you may know, we started with our eighth-grade team and that became the place where the kids would take the initiatives back and share it with their classmates. So, it became as an as-needed meeting as opposed to a direct lesson. We are, also are exploring at the other grade levels. We continue to execute the, implement the, take the lead at seventh grade, which has been in place for several years now, and we have the Monday meeting in fifth grade. So, we really are exploring, we're in a, a study phase, if you will, to explore other ways to roll out advisory in a way that's meaningful to the kids and really empowering them, continuing with that theme of empowerment and student-led initiative.
Penny?
I was wondering how our caseloads-
I was wondering how our caseloads of 220, 260 students per counselor, if I have that right, relate to our peer middle schools in Connecticut and other outstanding school districts?
Sure. And first of all, I have to apologize because there was some confusion on my part about the caseload. So you may have noticed there was a discrepancy between your hard copy and the presentation, just by a couple. So the range really is more like we think two, well, we're pretty sure 200 to 260 is what the actual number is. And those fluctuations, as we said, seem to have to do with class size and other responsibilities and things like that that counselors have. In terms of how it relates, I think we're pretty on target with other districts. I know Ridgefield is about 250 per counselor. We looked at Fairfield, which is 200 to 250 per counselor. There are districts that have more, there are some that have less. Wilton has more. So, but it seems as though, you know, we did some study of that. I don't have the numbers for Darian, I'd be interested in that. But yeah.
And just as a point of reference, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges has 300 as an upper limit for the number. And it's beyond that, that they think that it's, would have a significantly negative impact on the students. So we're pretty, we seem to be well-positioned around those comparisons and that upper limit.
Jen?
So I just want to thank all of you as well. I've had so many of you, actually. And it like is amazing because whenever I've needed anything or my kids have needed something, you all have made it so easy and you know, you get right to it. So you know, that is such a benefit to have all of you here. So we so appreciate it. I also wanted to just talk about the looping because I also have seen, you know, the difference in the, in the high school. And you know, I've been lucky enough to have some of my children, you know, really have relationships with some, with some of you. And I think it would be so beneficial to have that throughout, if it's possible. I know it's, the teams make it really difficult, but it would be so great if we could have that. So also, at the high school, I've been made aware of a thing called Connections. I know we're gonna hear about that soon. But, and you talk about Lunch Bunch, like do you have like those one-on-ones with every like child on your like team per se? Or like how, is it like an open-door policy? Like how does that work? Because I know the Connections kind of carries through also. But like is that Lunch Bunch, is that kind of like a similar model or?
Well, I mean, we all try to sit down one-on-one with every kid on our caseload, but I would say that it doesn't always happen. That's the goal at the beginning of every year. Lunch Bunch, so we go into the classes in the beginning of the year and introduce ourselves and then we do smaller, you know, in fifth grade, we do smaller lunches to get to know the kids, kind of in a smaller group. And then we follow up with some individual. And then the lunch, then we open it up to, like we'll invite kids to, if you want to join Lunch Bunch and meet other kids and, you know, get out of the cafeteria, then sign up here. And then, so some kids end up choosing to come for Lunch Bunch and some might not if they prefer to be in the cafeteria.
And then, yes, we certainly have an open-door policy and really, you know, are happy to get connected with a student any way it happens. So for example, today, one of the students who came down, her friend brought her. Another parent contacted me to give me a heads-up about a conversation they were having that they wanted us to follow up on. A teacher, you know, mentioned a student. Kids can drop in, they can email, they can see us in the hall, you know, it's really any way that works, you know, we're happy to know about the desire, you know, to meet and we'll certainly follow up on that.
Jen, just to follow up, I did want to just mention that the Connections is, the advisory was replaced with Connections and there's lessons that have been designed that the teachers do in those Connections. And you'll hear more about that in another presentation, but the SAC staff may just not be aware of that. So that may be something that they might look at if, when they're doing their research on the advisory period.
Great, thanks. Penny?
I was just wondering if you noticed any difference in how you have to reach out to boys versus girls. I did happen to notice that most of the students in the video were girls. And so I don't know if there are different approaches that you have, if you find that the boys in the classes come to you as readily as the girls or vice versa, just what observations you might have had?
Frankly, I don't think any of us find it to be a dramatic difference. But yes, if we, you know, really had an exact count, I would imagine that there were more female students that were engaged with a counselor, but not necessarily dramatically so.
I would say we meet them where they're at. So often, if there's a student who, you know, wants to go for a walk, sometimes we'll just walk around the building or, you know, we basically meet them where they're at. Like if it means climbing a wall or getting them, you know, to talk, then doing that, we'll do that. You know, I often will have students in my office that are just like pacing back and forth, you know, because they want to be up and moving around. So, you know, no matter if it's a woman or a male, we're doing whatever they need, you know, so that we can get to help them however, which way we need to do that.
Yeah, just something I've mentioned to parents that's a little bit interesting. I see equal numbers of boys and girls, pretty equal. But I'd say I have more boys visibly upset and crying in my office than girls overall. And I've sort of wondered what that's about. They certainly would never want me to tell, tell anybody that they're doing that. But I think it's about just having a safe place. We all really try to create very safe spaces in our offices and we don't ever push a child back into the world, their very, you know, tenuous world or tribe out there unless they're ready. So when, you know, I do have more boys kind of break down, you know, not terribly, but I think they just are relieved. They have a place where they can really actually show how they feel about things. I'm not sure they have a lot of spaces for that in other areas.
Just at Liz Reynolds, I was just gonna add on to what Tammy was saying and I think the approach with boys and girls, you know, we really do try to incorporate lots of different techniques and strategies with the students. Oftentimes, you know, it's wonderful to get them doing some hands-on activities, to get engaged in a game or, you know, something artistic. Or as Tammy mentioned, sometimes we'll just take them outside and shoot hoops, get them moving. So I think we really try to take an eclectic approach to, you know, what's gonna reach the student. And I would say along the lines of the male-female, I find more often that it's the age. I find that my fifth grade students, I have fifth and sixth, and I find that my fifth graders really want to come in and they really want to talk things through. I find that there's that little shift when they move on to sixth grade where it's nice when you have that rapport with them from the year before. They're more likely to come to you because they've, they knew you from the previous year. So I think it's more to do with the age and their development. And I think, you know, we really try to do a nice job of reaching each student where they are, as Tammy mentioned.
Maria?
This may be an obvious one, but in middle school, do you notice any one social strand that you focus on more than the others?
It's a great question. Yeah, off the top of my head, I would say, you know, self-awareness is so foundational that, you know, if there's something that people want to go better, you know, there's usually some work to do there. And then certainly the relationship skills, in particular in terms of more like professional relationships. In other words, you know, working together as classmates, not meaning, you know, sort of best friend relationships. The SAC's Habits of Success is a wonderful tool. It really focuses on that skill of collaboration. And like I said, that was absolutely, you know, reconfirmed through this Google research. So I would say those two.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had two questions. The first being, I know a number of you have been in the district for quite a while. And I would love to get a sense for, are you seeing an increase in any certain types of social-emotional issues or an increase in caseload over the past, you know, five to 10 years that, you know, we as a board should be looking to address at some level?
I mean, I can't speak for, you know, the statistics for sure, but my opinion, I feel like, and we've kind of had some conversation among our department, that I think that there is an increase in our awareness of kids who are struggling with stress management and anxiety.
And I just think, you know, the navigating the, the social world has become more challenging and has more layers to it with the increase of technology and, and young people having access to technological devices at an earlier age. And so I think that, in my perspective, has been difficult for kids. And so hence, we have spent a lot of time trying to help kids make sound choices and help them navigate that social C, you know?
That would be what I would have to say. So I guess, I guess the follow-up, and it might not be tonight, but I think a good follow-up for the board would be, is there something that we should be doing or providing or something for you to be able to reach those kids or, you know, that, it is a more complex social-emotional world. And even as a parent, I'm, I struggle with helping to manage that for my kids. So I would love to, if you could sort of touch base with Dr. Lutze and with us, what we can do, especially since we're heading into budget season and, you know, there may be things that we need to be looking at to provide the kids. The other question I had is, we like to be leaders and I would love to get the statistic on the caseload for Wilton, since they seem to have the low caseload in the district. I don't know if we're, we have, so, oh, Wilton's high, they have, oh, they're higher.
We're solidly in the middle range, Deanna.
Okay.
Solidly in the middle range.
Okay.
We checked.
But just to go on that, I think that not only looking at the caseload, you should also be looking at the number of parent meetings conducted because to me, that's, that's a different indicator, which is, you know, you know, the quantity of involvement, you know. I think you need to look at it into levels.
I just want to say, I think that's a really good point, that I think those numbers are important, but we really do have to look at all that goes into that. It's not just per kid. And when I'm in their office, they are so busy, I can barely get them to meet with me, not really. But you know, it's like, I've got this, I've got this. And, and a lot of it is kid, you know, parent and parent phone calls. And so I think that's an important point, just to, I don't know how to really look at that. It's a tough thing to track. But you know, we can try to look at that.
But yeah, and when you loop that back into the 11% academic, you know, I think it all kind of, you know, there's, there's real academic indicators for that with your meta-analysis. So I think, you know, we're, I think we would all be interested in, you know, how that, we can help that. So thank you.
Yeah, Deanna, I just want to kind of follow up what you're saying too with the stress level. And I understand it's most relationship-oriented towards, but I know that, you know, our district is a high-performing district and there's a lot of stresses. And I know once it goes to the high school, the academic pressures and not even academic, it's just, you know, whether you're in the band, the theater, whatever, you're just always at the top. And I see that a lot of that kind of keeps creeping down lower and lower. Like so I wasn't sure like how much of that's crept down to the middle school years. And, you know, you know, we want to try to make them as, able to cope with the stresses because there's stress in life, in the best manners. And so I was just trying to gauge, do you feel like where it's at and what we can do, like whether to gear them up? So, because it just increases as we go along.
I think that's a great point. And I'm just gonna share a brief conversation I had with a seventh grader at the school climate where she was brainstorming about incentives and how we were gonna get kids involved. And they said, she said, the first thing she said is, "A sleep-in. What we really need is a sleep-in." And I said, "Well, tell me about that. Why do you need a sleep-in?" She said, "Well, because I'm up till 1:00 in the morning. I have school and then I've got my sport, which is, you know, I have, I'm in a sport that takes a lot of my time. And by the time I get home and eat dinner and do the dishes and then do my homework for three hours, it's 1:00 in the morning." Now, I know kids hyperbole and all of that, but it was a little alarming to think about a middle schooler talking about, you know, whatever that was. And I'm sure this wasn't just one case. So I do think it's trickling down. I think it's something we need to be aware of. And I'm so excited, Mark Brackets, the district is bringing him to help us to, you know, think about some of these issues around emotional awareness and, and stress. And I hope that'll be an ongoing conversation for us.
You know, we certainly do see that. And that's definitely a common kind of conversation we're having with kids. I know Sarah has a great poster on her door. My personal example is my best friend that I grew up with didn't have a single AP course in high school, had Cs, and he's an MD, he's a doctor, you know, and it's, you know, honest-to-goodness, true story. So, meaning I often find the need to bring out my friend Jamie as an example to just help kids know it's, it's a long journey, there's a lot of time, there's no make or break moments. I think that's where kids sometimes feel. You know, I had a kid, you know, bawling today. She got a C+ on the first math quiz. So, you know, helping them realize they're doing the right thing, you just keep working at it and it's gonna get there. Sarah, your poster's great.
Oh, my poster. Yeah, it's, it's an Eleanor Roosevelt quote. So the quote goes, "Nobody can make me feel inferior without my permission." You've probably heard that. So sometimes the kids don't know inferior, but I say that about myself is what I say. Yeah.
Twenty-five years old.
Oh, at 25 years old? Oh, you know, I don't have that one memorized, but do you remember?
What about all these different really successful people and where they're at at 25 years old, like?
I think Oprah had been fired and J.K. Rowling was homeless. I think that is another one. All at 25, so, yeah. And Brad, very nicely, this is actually a good example. We are very busy. So it was my student Brad that had to take care of this morning because I was in eighth grade classrooms introducing myself to my eighth grader. So she came home very sad about her test. And an interesting thing was that she had, her parents had been very interested in her grades and apparently her parents had looked up this quiz that just got released this morning on Power School and sent a text about what, you know, what happened, why is he plus? So she'd actually gotten that information and that was the trigger for why she was so upset about everything. So there were, were a lot of things to talk about and I was able to call home and have a conversation about that. So pressure comes from everywhere, not just the kids themselves.
I just wanted to say, to get back to you, Mrs. Appel, in terms of helping, helping to balance that stress. And so much is academic and so much we find is not, it's self-induced on the part of the child. It's not even necessarily coming from family members. But nonetheless, it's there, it's percolating, it's coming to the surface. And, you know, our, our challenge is how can we help buffer that? How can we help balance that? And, you know, over my years, I've valued weaving in some different activities and experiences for kids around kindness. And I used Brian's slide with a number of students that he shared with us at Convocation by the Dalai Lama that said, "Be kind whenever possible." And then that beautiful lifting up of, "It's always possible." And so I think when kids see that something like that is just ever so important and it's never judged, it's never measured, it's totally their choice, they can get 100 every single day in being kind if they choose it. And so taking just those natural, beautiful interpersonal skills that they can practice amongst peers, with family members, and highlighting them and magnifying them in terms of their importance. And I think that that helps to validate young people and sometimes can act as a little bit of a buffer to the stress when we help them realize how important those are as well as their academic achievement.
I'm so impressed with your empathy and understanding and the extra hours that you must put in. If nothing else, as you're thinking about it at home, is how you're going to help the student that's particularly going through something difficult. I wanted to ask, how do you pass on the information to the high school or another school if they're transferring someplace else? Is there a procedure that you have? I would be surprised if you didn't, but.
Tammy is our transition coordinator for this year, but we rotate and take turns. So Brad has done a fabulous job the last two years and I worked before that. We have a share at the end of the year. It's usually about two weeks before the end of school. We take it very seriously. We block out our calendars. We usually schedule it around now. And, and so we meet with all the counselors and the administrator, who is the chosen administrator for the freshmen for next year. And we go into detail, any student who we feel really needs, they need to understand. So it's not every single student on our list, but it's students who've had academic challenges. but it's students who've had academic challenges, family challenges, social-emotional challenges. It's a confidential meeting. We also invite the social workers and the psychologists. So we really, and then the head of counseling over at the high school starts to think about how she's going to divide up. One of the reasons we do that is out of fairness. So those students, unless, I know they follow families over there, but if it's a first, if it's an oldest child, then those students get divided up evenly among the counselors, and then the other students get divided up as well. So there's a lot of talking, there's a lot of sharing. I was just on the phone this morning with Ann Vernon, because I have a favorite student from last year, and I was just really curious how he was doing. We are not able to look in Power School right now. I don't know if that's on purpose or not, but we can't see how our, how our, the high school grades or anything. So, I was, I was just curious. So I called her, and we chatted for about 10 minutes. And I was able to give her some background. Obviously, when we're meeting in the spring, we have, you know, two to three minutes for each student. And that's not a lot. So, that's how we do that.
Just wanted to add on to your question, Hazel, about the four into five transition, because that's another big piece, getting ready to receive these young, almost fifth graders. So we've, we've done a lot over the years to develop that process. We, the three lower-division counselors and Dr. Clapp actually go out, and we visit each of the three schools. We meet with all of the fourth-grade teachers who have spent that entire year with them in the classroom. We get a lot of feedback on, you know, what works well for each student. So we really spend a day at each elementary school, hearing from the teachers, hearing from the support staff. We stick around and watch what they're doing at recess and lunch. Sometimes that's really telling. And just, you know, starting to have those conversations, getting to know some of the kids, introducing ourselves. And then we head out in the evening and do a parent portion as well, where we answer questions. And, you know, oftentimes, stick around and have some more personal, private conversations with parents. So I think that's a big piece of it, too, is receiving our students in the fall.
And then, of course, you know, as we were talking about the, the non-looping, we do share amongst each other. So at the beginning of every single year, we all sit together individually, and we share the students that are on our caseloads.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could I just conclude by saying that I think you can tell from spending some time with this group of people, that they're a very compassionate and skilled group of people who work very hard. And they've spent the last six or eight months having a lot of really good dialogue around how they do their jobs, and looking at the research, and talking with, amongst each other and with others about how to improve. And I want to publicly support their, their quest to do that. And clearly, coming out of this evening, we have a short list of things that we'd like to continue to focus on, around how to even do it better than they already do. And they do a fabulous job. So I wanted to publicly thank them for the work they did last year, and for the work they've done in the last few weeks with Dr. Bliss. And you're all wonderful, and, and I really appreciate how hard you work. And I'm sure the Saks administration shares that.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to, you know, agree with Ms. Pianka's comment. So thank you all. And, and it's a school night, so please head home when you're, after this.
Now.
Now.
Feel free.
Thank you.
He's very kind of you.
Okay.
Great.
All right. The next item on our agenda for this evening is a facilities update with Mr. Willoughby.
Boy, that's a shift of gears, isn't it?
Yeah, really. Now for the nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
I put together a group of slides. They speak to some of the capital projects that we've done. There are still quite a few that are still around, some of the masonry work and some of the larger projects, that we're working with architects and engineers to come up with a plan to move forward on those projects. They're not in this presentation. I'm just going to try to address the things that we have accomplished in, over the summer. This is the South Farm Road parking lot, something that's been near and dear to my heart for years. Now, we finally got it accomplished. The town put it under a bond, and we got it completed this summer. This photo really shows what we did. I took this from the roof of the building, so it'll give you a kind of a bird's-eye view of what we did. We actually picked up about 14 additional spaces by reconfiguring. And Tiger was very, very instrumental in working with me and trying to cut off islands and move things around. And we actually marked out the crosswalks a little differently. We were able to pick up a couple of feet here, a couple of feet there. And in the end, end of the game, we had about 14 spaces. The shadow in that picture is me. I was running around trying to get some photos done. And I actually tried to change this one today, and I guess it didn't get there. But this is east of the main entrance. We went, we spent about $50,000 here and $50,000 at West. And we tore up curbing that had really been destroyed by snowplows and buses and things over the course of years. So we were able to go back. So you can see, it's, it's, the curbing is all brand-new, probably lasted for 50 years. But some of the asphalt work is really just a patch. Down the road, we have plans to probably look at it as another capital project, to do the rest of our parking lots in the future. Another handicap ramp, same, same thing at East. While we were at it, Tiger recommended we do some catch basins. So we were able to incorporate that into some of the curb work. This is another one near and dear to me. We did the bathroom petitions a year and a half ago in a capital project. And oops, this is one I forgot. Shame on me. So we were able to get that accomplished this, this summer. This is a, the current condition of the vertical blinds at West School. And I took a couple of shots, so you can see, some of them are falling apart. They really don't do, do any justice. So we went on, we have a plan now to do all-new shades, which are room-darkening shades, and, and be much more secure for the staff and students. So here's the beginning. This is one of the first classrooms that we've done. We had planned on trying to get it all done over the summer. Manufacturer didn't get us our shades on time. So we're doing it in evenings and on weekends, when we can. And hopefully, by the end of September, we'll have accomplished everything at West and East and South. Got all-new blinds with the window project. So we're moving right ahead. Here's another example of, you know, you look at the picture, and you say, "Boy, we spent a lot of money, but it doesn't look like much." We actually put in a new curb. We ran about 250 feet here. And again, we, we really only patched what we had with the money that we could spend. You can see the alligator and the cracked ceiling in the parking lot. Again, another capital project down the road that we'll be back looking at. But the major issue for me, at least, was the curbing, especially in this area. It's the bus area for the children. And she was stepping off the buses onto a curb that was crumbling under their feet. So I'm very happy that we got this done. This is a hallway, and if you're familiar with West, this is where the kids all line up on the wall and wait for their lunch. It's usually a mess. We were able to get in there and paint it this year. So that's part of the money that was appropriated. We had about $50,000 for each building. We probably spent 80%, 85% of the money over the summer. And now we're going back evenings and weekends, picking up some of the things that we couldn't accomplish over the summer. It just was trying to coordinate between cleaning the building, painting the building, constructing the building. It just got too, too difficult to get everything done. So we saved a little bit of money, and we'll go back and complete it. South and Saks both got hot water heaters, and I wasn't going to bore you with two of the same slides. Very, very, very energy-efficient. These things probably are 95% efficient. So they, and it was something that we really, really needed. John Perna, my assistant, was very instrumental in doing some of the research on this equipment. And it's a real nice job. Demand meter. We did a demand meter, and I explained the demand meter a couple of times in the past. What it actually does is coordinate with our energy management, and it manages our demand. And the demand is the multiplier that sends your bill through the roof. So this one was just installed over the summer, and we'll get some data on and be able to share where we think we are with it. But they typically pay for themselves in about a year. They probably save us 5% to 8% on our bill. So. Expansion joints all throughout Saks. It's a project that the engineer is working on right now. We're trying to come up with a plan. I'm going to tell you, there's probably 15 of these things. It's where the, a couple of different buildings meet, so you have an expansion joint. The joints that were installed 25 years ago are failing. It's just a, it's an issue that we really don't want to attack and pull it all apart until we know what the right fix is. And we're working on it as we speak. This is a photo that I just wanted to put in here. It has nothing to do with capital. No, the floor is not wet. It's just beautiful. This is the work that the custodians have done for the district over the summer. And I wanted to make sure I mentioned that to each and every one of you, that I really respect these guys. They really worked hard. This is Saks out in front of the cafeteria, and this was taken a couple of days ago, after the children have been here for a week and a half, beating it up. The guys in particular at Saks, working around all the construction issues in that building, and working a little shorthanded, really did a superlative job. And I'm very, very, very proud to say that I work with them. This one surprised us, I think, probably surprised Brian more than anybody. Bill Egan was ready to jump out of his window in his office. Tiger Man decided that we wanted to get this access from the student parking lot to the main building, and he tore it up the day before school started. And we were all surprised. We're like, what's going on? But he was able to get it done. They poured the concrete, I think, a couple of hours before school. But they got it finished. We're hoping that it's going to really help some of the issues with the students crossing that road, taking their life in their hands at times. It's probably the precursor to another one at some point in time, where we'll be able to bring students across in a much safer way.
The day before next year's school.
Yeah. We'll do that in the beginning of the summer. This is a slide of the library lab. It's a new lab. Maintenance guys went in, and we changed all the lighting in here. We used some of the money we had for painting to paint the walls. We're going to change out the carpet, but the only places that were really damaged in the carpet were around the perimeter. So we chose the contrasting color, and we were able to do the perimeter. So this was in-house work. It wasn't a capital project, but I just wanted to show that we've been working pretty hard all summer. ADA compliance. All of a sudden, they decided that they passed some legislature that we needed additional bars in the bathrooms. And it wasn't as simple as just, oh, let's slam a couple of bars on the wall. They all have to have some substantial backing behind them. We were going to do it in-house. We were able to find a vendor that could help us out, did it at a great price. And he's been in changing and putting these additional ADA-required compliance grab bars in restrooms throughout the district. It was something that was in a capital project. We took it out of a capital project a couple of years ago, and we've, we've just been able to accomplish it now. This is the new clubhouse at South. No. This is, is a storage building on Gower Road that has been vacant for about 10 years. John and I were looking at it for a long time, and we put it into our budget. We asked for capital. We got the money. We put up a new roof. We fixed all the soffits on it. We're going to put a couple of new garage doors in there. But we're always talking about storage. Storage, there isn't enough storage anywhere. This is going to be exceptional. We, we used to house snow blowers inside the building with gas in them. So we moved them out into a little plastic shed that we purchased about a year ago. Now we fixed this up. We can, we can really store a lot of things in here. Excuse me, some salt. We have a tractor that we put in there now that used to stay out in the rain. And all the snow blowers are in there. And that's it for now. Questions?
So Bob, I'd like to express the board's appreciation for all the efforts that your staff has put in over the summer, and, you know, to, to kind of make our facilities convey to the outside world what we want them to say. And also, I think, you know, the board knows, but I think the public needs to understand the hours that you and your staff put in, you know, throughout the year, trying to, you know, make, make our facilities safe for all the, all the kids and, and teachers. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Let me open it up to questions. Jen?
I just want to add that thank you for everything that you do, and everything, you know, you've got such a great staff. And you always have a smile, no matter what is happening. West is flooding, and there's like blizzards. And you're always happy, and you're so passionate about what you do. And we really are very grateful for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the pictures are great, because they really show just, you know, how beautiful that South parking lot looks now. And when you just, the pressure you get for kids even coming in, you feel good going to a place that's nice and clean. I just wanted to add, you know, a comment you said for the Saks custodial support there. I know I was at a Saks Building Committee meeting, and it made a real impression to me, that the construction workers had mentioned that, you know, they work with a lot of different schools. And they had said that when they had gone in through Saks, they thought it was the best or most cleanest middle school they've ever seen in all the schools they've worked with, which says a lot. So, kudos to them.
I will share that with them.
Hazel?
I just wanted to add, it sounds like you're a fan club meeting.
You're making me blush.
Well, I need to go down to more often, so you can...
I just wanted to, I think learning takes place in a lot of different ways. And people that are working in a building, to be able to have that building be really nice, and not falling apart, and not dirty, and not having things like that, than said, all the positive, good things that you and your people do to make this, all of our buildings and the outside safe, and then also enjoyable places to be in, nice places to be in. It's appreciated. And I'm sure it has some little effect on the scores. We'll have to work on that. Thank you. Brennan?
I was wondering to ask if there are any other kind of major items upcoming. And I think I remember you talking last time you were in front of us about the West gym and the floor and replacement of that. So that was one item on my, on my mind.
Yeah, we've done some pretty extensive research, and John has kind of headed up that research. Because of the lack of rain this summer, we kind of fell short on data. We didn't have enough data to really prove where the water was coming, because it wasn't coming anywhere. But we do know that there's an issue in the, on the floor in the gym. We've pinpointed a couple of areas, and we made some corrections. Now we've worked, as a matter of fact, the Saks remediation has helped us. Talking with a couple of the contractors, what we may be able to do on that floor in the gym, we have water perking through the floor. The product that we use to encapsulate some of the hazardous materials is a waterproofing product. So I've gone back to the architect and said, "Hey, look, let's take a look at what's available. We may be able to go back and strip out the floor, put this epoxy-type material on it, and then resurface it." And at the same time, still continue the research on the water infiltration, if it ever shows up. Right now, the water table is so far down, it's very hard to get good data.
Did we, we patched the floor over the summer?
Yeah, we have.
To make sure that it's okay.
It's not a safety issue right now. We keep an eye on it, make sure. And believe me, we always speak to the PE teachers. You got anything going on? What's happening? And they'll tell you. You get some really good feedback.
Penny?
I was happy, I was happy to see the crossing at the New Canaan High School. It was something I was always interested in. And I was just wondering, do we have the appropriate signage? Because I don't think all, all students, obviously, are not going to go to this spot to cross. I just want to make certain that the, we have signage there, so that drivers don't think, oh, I only have to really watch out for the students in this particular area.
Yeah, I've talked to Tiger. Tiger wasn't here when that was being installed. He was having surgery. But we've talked about, and he's working on the signage to get some things there. We have a temporary sign at that crossing, but yes, we want to put some more speed signs along the whole roadway. We want to talk about, there is a crosswalk right here. You've seen the signs, so people will see it. And we'll look at another, maybe, location to put an additional crosswalk in at a later date.
Well, and the, the PFA and the New Canaan Police Department also have collaborated on putting speed signs and things like that there periodically, as people pull in, because it is 5 miles per hour. There's a big difference between 5 and 15. And so we have, we've done that through the years as well, at different times during the year, to put up those kinds of, I don't know if it's radar, or whatever it is that tells you the speed that people are going. So it is, it's an ongoing discussion. The, the point that you raised, Penny, which is important, is, it's great to have that crosswalk that's a start. The next challenge is getting our students to use that. The next challenge is getting our students to use that, you know, as they come across. So we're, we're talking about different ways to encourage our students to use the crosswalk as they come across. But it is important always to note that it's, people need to really slow down as they come in and out of that parking lot, because students do pop out from behind cars all the time as they're walking over to, over to classes. Couldn't resist the opportunity to say.
Jen?
And I'm just going to add, I'm so psyched that we have this, too. And in the winter, I mean, I've literally seen girls like try to jump over snowbanks and fall into the street and have like cars whizzing by. So like, hopefully, in the winter, this is going to be like shoveled and stuff, but it's so necessary. So I'm so happy that it's there.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have two questions. First, you know, when, when you were talking about the, the shades, the shades project, and you talked about installation on evenings and weekends? Are, are we installing those shades or someone else?
Outside.
And is there any, okay, good. Because, you know, I go to, right to overtime when I hear that, so.
No, no, no. We, actually, it's nicer now. We have, we've changed some of our shift schedule.
Okay.
Guys are staying later in the buildings in the elementary schools.
Okay.
So we can get the guy to come in and work on the shades in the evening. His biggest issue, the vendor's issue, was that the materials just didn't come in. So now he's trying to get his work scheduled together. Hopefully, we'll get some things done. We've scheduled him to be in over a couple of the days that the school is off. So maybe, he's winding up, I think he's doing about three classrooms a night.
Okay.
You know, you've got 60, 70 classrooms. He could be here until next year.
Goodness. And so will we get an update closer to the budget season on sort of where we were, you know, on our projects versus budget? And also, sort of, we had a bunch of capital items that were approved by the town, and did we get all those done? Where they are in, in sort of the process?
Sure. Yeah. We wound up having a whole bunch of capital projects, and then they added some more. Thank you. Just couldn't cram them all into that one period. So, yeah, there'll, there'll be another update coming. I think I usually do something right towards the end of the year here.
You do, right. Just as we approach the end of the calendar year, we'll, we'll have an update on capital projects from the FY '17 budget as we begin preparing to, to present the FY '18 budget. That will get into the finance, finances of it, and the spent, what's not, and sort of where we are. This, tonight's an opportunity, it's the highlights really of the summer work. And it's a very, it's a thick packet, and to think that it's representative of two and a half months or so of work by the team is really very impressive. And Bob and John together, you know, it's great to compliment the custodians and the maintenance guys, and they're doing a wonderful job. And they're doing it in large part thanks to the leadership that you're both providing to your, to your department. So thanks for those efforts. And yes, we'll get into the, the numbers and the budgets, and spent and not spent, and all of that. And it's usually late November or December as we do them.
Okay. And also, I'd like to thank you and Tiger for really taking the time, and I know you do this all the time. And I think that's the wonderful thing about your relationship with Tiger and the town, is that you really kind of work together to, you know, kind of work for the best entrance of the town and, and the schools. And those 14 extra parking spots, I know, were greatly appreciated on the high school open house night. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Penny?
I just wanted to say that in addition to all the trip work that you, Bob, and John did this summer, that you provided tremendous support to the Saks Building Committee over and above that. So it's certainly been a big workload, and thank you for all the efforts.
It's been fun.
Always interesting.
Yeah.
Any other questions, or? Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a statement of accounts with Ms. Haberman.
Hi, everybody. I'm not sure I can be as exciting as the facilities and the student counseling. Is it not loud enough? I don't think we want it as exciting. That close? Is that better?
Maybe tilt it up towards your.
It's very good. Yeah. Now, is it even on?
Yes.
Yes.
All set.
Anyway, you guys should have the statement of accounts that you've become accustomed to seeing in front of you. And to remind you, the town appropriated $86,240,844 for fiscal year '17, as of the end of August. So we're just starting. Remember, most of the salaries are not kicking in until September. But we're at a full, a total expended amount of $6,139,479, which is only 7.1% of the budget. If you look at the encumbrances, we've encumbered about 20.1, 20.1% more of $17,328,283 in non-salary accounts. The salary accounts are encumbered when we do the first payroll in September. So when we do our next statement of account, you'll see the salary encumbrances in there as well. Those salary accounts represent about 63% of the budget. So that's going to be a big, big section of what you're seeing next time. There are no transfers during this period, so I expect we'll probably have some transfers when we do the next one, but as of now, there's nothing in there. We will reforecast again in November, December. And that's really all I have to say. If you want to look at any of the stuff, I'm here for questions. Not a lot of activity going on yet, though.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
You asked everyone else questions. I'm getting all easy.
Well, I just want to thank you for coming tonight. So it's nice to, to see you. And I think for the members of the public who haven't been introduced to you, Tracy's been a wonderful addition to the finance department, so we're really lucky to have you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to the action items, we have in front of us a calendar for the 2017 Board of Education meetings. And you all got that in your Friday notes. Hope you had a chance to take a look at that, and make sure that, you know, you can be here for most of them. And if I could get a motion to approve as a first read the 2017 proposed meeting dates for the Board of Education. Brendan? Second. Jen? And so since this is only a first read, we don't need to vote. We will bring this back in another week or so, in two weeks. Yeah, next meeting for a vote. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sherri? Second. Sangita? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. And do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move to announcements and future business.
Sure.
Dr. Olshey?
Thank you. Just as a reminder, our next Board of Education meeting is October 4th, which is a Tuesday. At that meeting, we'll hear from the second part of our guidance team. You know, it's, we, we decided, we made the decision to present the guidance information to the board in two parts, because the role of the school counselors at the middle school is different from the role of the school counselors at the high school. But they do function as one department, which I think we heard a little bit from the counselors about when they talked about the transitions and how they communicate. But having been at the high school for a couple of years, I can say firsthand that that was one of the first things that we would do with ninth-grade students and even beyond. If they were, if they were experiencing difficulty, we'd think to pick up the phone and make a call and, and learn from them as well. So there's a nice connection between the departments. But we'll be hearing from our ninth through 12th guidance department, and then we'll be looking at the schedule for board meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you. That's the end of our agenda. If I could get a motion to adjourn? Sherri? Second. Hazel? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.